...by second two thousand and twelve meeting of the Yukon City Council to order if you'd rise for the invocation by Pastor Bob Yant from the First United Methodist Church remain standing for the flag salute please.
Let us pray. Eternal God who has allowed for the formation of governments and the gathering of communities all across this nation and around the world, tonight we give you thanks. We're grateful for a nation where freedom is valued and appreciated. We're grateful for a time this week of celebrating the great freedoms of our nation and we pray that you will help each of us to be inspired toward living more fully as free and citizens who have responsibility for each other. I pray your blessings tonight upon this city council, our elected leaders who serve and watch over our good community for the good of us all. Bless them with wisdom and with strength and with boldness to make decisions that are good for us all tonight. We pray for our nation. Pray your blessings upon us in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll please.
Albert Smith.
Here.
Gerba.
Here.
McCarron.
Here.
Opitz.
Here.
Presentations and proclamations. None this evening?
None this evening.
Next item is the visitor's section. This is opportunity for anyone who would like to address the council about a non-adjourned item, if they would come forward, state their name, their business.
How are you sir?
Fine sir.
My name's Quincy Rinkle. I'm the superintendent of recreation for Yukon. I wanted to send out a personal invitation to the citizens to our Freedom Festival celebration that's coming up this week. Obviously Tuesday, July third, we kick it off with our veterans tribute. The rodeo opera will be there at the beginning at five P.M., followed by the veterans dinner, and then we'll have Irv Wagner and then fireworks at ten P.M. On July fourth, we're gonna have, starting off with the Cherry Bomb Triathlon at eight A.M., we'll have the car show, which will start at ten o'clock. Actually, the registration's at ten o'clock. And then we have the children's programs that run throughout the day, and then go into the evening activities. We'll have Super Freak Out There, four-year entertainment, and followed that up by the patriotic music and the Oklahoma City Philharmonic. Again, we'll finish the night off with fireworks at ten P.M. We'd like to welcome everybody to come out. It's a great family event. We're real fortunate to have something like this here in Yukon. We'd like to thank each and every one of you for supporting that. I don't think the citizens underst- oh, they probably do, but it's a great, it's a great thing to have, you know, around our city. It's supported by Grayson, obviously, and the council, which we can't thank you enough. You guys have any questions for me about it?
I have one. What time does Super Freak start?
They are at five P.M. on the fourth.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anything else?
Thank you Quincy.
Thanks.
We appreciate it very much. Any other visitors? Visitors? See none. At this time, we will recess as Yukon City Council and reconvene as the Yukon Municipal Authority. First item is one A on the YMA consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion, and if an item does not meet with the approval of all the authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve A, the minutes of the regular meeting of June the nineteenth, two thousand and twelve, and B, the payment of material claims in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars and eighty-four cents. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll please.
Gerba.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Opitz.
Yes.
The next item is two A, consider approving agreements with Utility Services Company, Inc., for asset management and full service maintenance of water storage vessels, cornwell tank, abandonment tank, tower, Mustang Tower, and Integris Tower for twelve years, expiring two thousand and twenty-three, at a cost of two million, thirty-nine thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars, to be paid from the Water and Sewage Enterprise Fund, treatment and supply account. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion?
I, do I have a, well, I noticed when I read through all of the material on the water storage, that there's a, uh, set of pumps that go along with them to keep the water stirred up and moving around and that sort of thing, and I guess I was curious at this point, is do we do any of that at this time, or is this something new that we want to do with them to improve the overall quality?
To improve the overall quality because really the pumping actually occurs off of the top of the tank rather than the bottom of the tank. So the stirring mechanisms will keep the water agitated in there. It will also reduce the amount of sediment buildup as well as making sure that all the water is fresh all the time.
Okay, I was curious, had we done anything like that in the past, or?
No sir, we have not.
Okay.
Other questions?
Yes, if approved, how soon would the project begin? Projects?
Projects.
Yeah.
Really pretty quick. The, we have to, first of all, we don't want to get, since it requires the draining of the tank, we do not want to start draining tanks at the peak of our water usage, so probably October, in November would be a much better time for us to, to be looking at, at starting the project.
But they're only gonna do one?
One at a time.
Since they're all, yeah. They're only gonna be doing one tank at a time.
Right.
Other discussion?
One other question. What did, I know we talked about it before, but did we have kind of a, not a timeframe of what it would take for each tower? Would it be down to roughly two months, sixty days, something like that? I don't remember.
Actually, it, we have a representative from the company here. If you'd come and identify yourself and address the question.
Yeah, my name is Steve Woodward with Utility Service. Due to the size of the tanks, you're gonna see each tank offline for anywhere from six to eight weeks. It could be a little longer on the lead abatement project because a little bit more labor involved in that. And then of course, at the time of year that the work is performed, will affect weather delays as well as coating cure times. So, six to eight weeks, ten weeks at the outset.
Sure. Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Other questions?
Yes, actually, one more. What, the water that's drained from the tanks at the time the projects begin on each tank, do we have a designated use for that water?
Actually, you let it, you let it drain down.
I see.
You don't just waste the water, you let it drain down.
Very good. Thank you.
I have, anything else? I have a couple of questions. One, the twelve-year contract, why twelve years Grayson?
Well, the twelve-year contract, first of all, gets us beyond the ten years that it requ- that is required by DEQ rules. We are to re- redo our tanks every ten years. We have certain tanks that have not ever been redone, and we wanted to get beyond that ten-year period so that we, every tank can then be serviced on a regular schedule.
Okay.
And so the ten years and then try to get beyond that.
Typically, we contract for one year. How are we able to contract for twelve?
This is a, this is a one-year contract, automatically renewable, and contains the language that non-appropriation, should we desire to extinguish the contract in a shorter period of time than the contract term itself.
Okay. Now, if I'd read the contract, I saw that?
Yes sir.
I would've seen that. It's a little, I'm sorry, how it was, and then the last, the forty-two thousand dollars in savings, is that, that's included in the two million dollar price tag that's on there now?
It is.
Okay.
To give you an idea, we, we budgeted this year four hundred thousand dollars to do one tank.
Right.
Just one tank.
Sure.
So.
Okay, those were my questions. Other questions?
Isn't, isn't that savings, that forty-five thousand dollar savings coming as a result of the three hundred thousand dollar down payment though?
It is. But that's where the three hundred thousand dollar down payment is coming from, from the four hundred thousand that we budgeted.
Gotcha.
Other questions? Call the roll please.
Smith.
Yes.
Opitz.
Yes.
Gerba.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Opitz.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Next item is three A, consider approving an expenditure of funds in the amount of fifty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars for the purchase of a Caterpillar two-seventy-seven C multi-terrain skid steer loader under state purchase contract W one ninety, pricing to be paid from the capital improvement fund. Do I have a motion? Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Uh, I noticed a couple, it was pretty, was there a reason that it was just kind of a bare bones? Did I notice that they, that particular piece of equipment comes with a lot of additional scoops and, and tools and stuff that you can put on the front, and I noticed it just had one.
That's, it has a, it's a single-purpose piece of equipment to be used inside the transfer station. It is being, were it, in fact, we have, we're looking at for this next year's capital improvement plan, other skid steers that will have other pieces of equipment other than a bucket on the front. But for this particular purpose, this fits our needs.
So you don't plan to use that anywhere else other than in the transfer station itself?
Uh, under DEQ rules, we would have to completely sanitize it to take it out of the transfer station.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I did have one other thing about that too. I noticed that there was not anything in there in the maintenance extension at all. It was, it was noted, but it wasn't part of the funding. I don't believe.
Yes sir, it, it does contain a two-year extended warranty. It comes with a three-year manufacturer's warranty and then with two-year extension to get to what is anticipated to be its life cycle considering the amount of use it will have on a daily basis. And so, we think that in five years, we're gonna be doing this again.
Okay, so there was a part of that though, where you accepted the?
Yes. It was, Bill, I forget exactly what the two-year extended warranty was, but I know that it was included.
Oh, okay, that's correct.
Other discussion? Call the roll please.
McCarron.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Opitz.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Gerba.
Yes.
This time we'll adjourn as YMA and reconvene as Yukon City Council. Item one is the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon City Council by unanimous consent, then can designate those routine items that wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve A, the minutes of the regular meeting of June nineteenth, two thousand and twelve, B, the payment of material claims in the amount of five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven dollars and ninety-one cents, C, the renewal of the existing radio system license agreement with the City of Oklahoma City for the term of July one, two thousand and twelve, through June the thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen, renewal of the existing inter-local agreement between the City of Oklahoma City and the regional household hazardous waste collection and management project for the term July one, two thousand and twelve, through June the thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen, E, the renewal of the existing inter-local agreement, cooperation agreement with the City of Bethany, providing use for the Yukon jail for the term of July one, two thousand and twelve, through June the thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen, for a rate of forty dollars per person, per prisoner, per day, through June thir- I'm sorry, July first, two thousand and twelve, through June the thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen. I already said that, didn't I? I need something, too many lines. F, the contract for services with the Yukon Family Services, Inc., for the term of July the first, two thousand and twelve, through June the thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen, in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. G, the agreement for services between the City of Yukon and Compassionate Hands, Inc., for the period beginning July first, two thousand and twelve, through June the thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen, at a cost of twelve thousand dollars. H, the renewal of an agreement for services between the City of Yukon and Chisholm Trail Historical Preservation Society for the period July one, two thousand and twelve, through June the thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen, with services and materials to be provided by the city during the Easter on the Prairie event. I, setting the date for the next regular council meeting for July seventeenth, two thousand and twelve, seven P.M. in the council chambers for the Centennial Building, twelve South Fifth Street, Yukon, Oklahoma. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll please.
Opitz.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Gerba.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Item two on the agenda is the reports of boards, commissions, and city officials.
None this evening, Mayor.
Thank you sir.
Uh, John?
Yes sir.
Do you have a, a little short comment on that? Appreciate it if sometime they could look at the dates for renewal on all of the people and everything that are on there, because quite a few of them are out of date now that Mr. Opitz and I have joined.
Those terms actually expired on June thirtieth, so for your next meeting packet, they'll be updated to the correct dates.
Oh, okay, for all of the people who were appointed and everything, okay. I noticed quite a few of them.
Those contracts have been sent out by the city attorney and are coming in, back into our office, signed and will be added to the next agenda, but most of them contain clauses for carrying on, even though they may be out of date.
No, well, this, this was just for the committees and?
Right.
All of that stuff, the actual?
Right. We'll be approving all of those, just as soon as we get them all approved.
He's talking about the parts board and?
Right.
I'm talking about all of these, yeah.
Right.
All of them. Okay.
There have been times when we've gone as much as two years without filling a position.
Oh, is there? Well, I noticed there's two that are back to two thousand and eleven on here, so.
I had a hard time the last time. I really did. All right, number, item three is consider approving the maintenance bond for McDonald's site ID, number oh-three-five dash oh-oh-five-oh, public water line located at thirty-one West Main Street. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll please.
McCarron.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Gerba.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Opitz.
Yes.
Item five is consider approving an amendment to the Viola Water Contract for testing operations and out-of-scope work resulting in a reduction of fee of eighteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars as recommended by the Public Works Director. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
I do have a question. So I looked through the financials back there, back on the monthly budget calculator, and it indicated on there that there was a savings of eighteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars, or it will decrease to that amount. And when I went back to the monthly budget calculator, I, there's a facility savings participation fee that's not in the twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen number. Did that go away, or did it go somewhere else?
Not considered as a part of this adjustment.
It's what now, I'm sorry?
Not considered as a part of this adjustment.
Uh.
It's gone.
Okay, I, well, I, I guess where did it go?
They, they, they went, go ahead Matt.
Under the new contract that we just started?
Yes sir.
That facility participation was paid off. That was part of the old program that started in nineteen ninety, where we took out a partnership between the two, Viola Water and the city for a half a million dollars, and that was our method of paying it back.
To pay back to them?
Yes.
So with that, in essence, then after that left, you're saying that that was actually the savings involved there then, or?
Well, you're seeing the new contract that started July one?
Yes.
And the rate that they quoted us a year and a half ago went into effect, and that was the savings. There, there was actually added for out-of-scope work, but it still constituted the savings based on what they bid a year and a half ago, and they're contractually obligated to do that now.
Well, see, I wouldn't, I guess I wouldn't have seen that as a savings then, had I, because if I took that, we're not, it's funny, we're not paying out, so I guess I don't, I don't have a problem.
The savings basically is what we were paying last year versus what we're gonna be paying this next coming year.
Okay, and I see the two thousand reduction there, okay. Thank you Matt.
Other discussion?
I'd be happy to vote on an eighteen thousand dollar fee reduction from Viola anytime they want to put it on the agenda.
Call the roll please.
Gerba.
Yes.
Opitz.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
The next item is six, consider, item six, consider approval of two thousand and twelve FEMA assistance to firefighters grant proposal subdivision, submission, excuse me, for vehicle acquisition with city matching funds of one hundred and five thousand dollars to be paid from the capital improvement fund upon award. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll please.
Smith.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Opitz.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Gerba.
Yes.
Item seven is consider approval of two thousand and twelve FEMA assistance to firefighters grant proposal submission for equipment purchase with city matching funds of four thousand thirty-eight dollars to be paid from the capital improvement fund upon award. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Sorry, second?
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll please.
Opitz.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Gerba.
Yes.
Alberts.
Next item is eight, consider approval of two thousand and twelve Oklahoma Department of Transportation tree grant proposal submission with in-kind contributions from the city in the amount of twenty-four thousand, four hundred and seven dollars and eighty-nine cents to be paid from the capital improvement fund upon award. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion?
Just that I want to thank whoever put the maps together for those locations, really looks good. That's good work.
Other discussion? Call the roll please.
Alberts.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Opitz.
Yes.
Gerba.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Next item is item nine, and that's the city manager's report, information only.
Uh, first thing I, I'd like to talk about is, for almost two weeks, you may have noticed lane closure on the westbound Main Street. Uh, I think I wrote you an email telling you that the, a leak in a six-inch water line had occurred, uh, right in the middle of the railroad track. When we first, the first number that we got, um, from, um, Kevin and, and our group was that it was, it was gonna, since it was a one-hundred-foot wide, fifty-foot wide, uh, either side of center right-of-way, that the cost for the repair would be ninety-three thousand dollars. Mainly because you have to bore the entire right-of-way, you can't trench it, and you have to put a twelve-inch sleeve under, uh, the entire right-of-way. That was enough for me to have to sit back and think until the next day when they found out that it was a two-hundred-foot wide right-of-way, one-hundred-foot either side of center, and that the cost would, could at that point approach two hundred thousand dollars to, to repair the line. At that point, I did stop, as did everybody else, and said, "We're gonna find a different way to fix this problem." Through the work of Kevin Brewer and our Public Works Department, Water Staff, we were able to come up with an action plan where we absolutely went around the break, cut it off, sealed it off, and it, it appears, while I have not seen the final bill, at this point, it appears that we're gonna get the repair done for less than fifty thousand dollars. So, that was really good news after the second report that we had gotten, and I wouldn't be surprised if we don't get it for much less than fifty thousand. The other thing I wanted to do was talk about the storm, give you a status report on the storm shelters. We have, in fact, delivered all five hundred and seventy-five packets out to our citizen. We, uh, we had a total of sixty-one of the original recipients of the award that chose, for whatever reason, not to take the shelters at this point, so we went sixty-one deep into the alternates to choose those. Of that, then we, we've currently issued about three hundred and thirty permits for the construction of the, or the installation of those shelters, and of that, I think we have fifty, fifty are pending for payment tonight. We have already received, uh, one payment, a small payment, but we have received our first payment in date, and those recipients have already received their checks. We anticipate moving forward with paying. We've got a hundred thousand dollars that we should get just any time now, and then fifty more shelters that are pending, um, a check from FEMA back to us, so. Program's going well, we're getting them in the ground pretty quickly. Remember, we had two years to spend the money, and so far, we've got three hundred and thirty that have received the permits, so those, that bodes well for getting them all in the ground in less than the two-year period of time.
Right, right.
So it's going very well. That's all.
Thank you sir. The next item is ten, that'd be new business. With no new business, the next item is eleven, Mr. Opitz, council discussion.
Have a great Fourth of July, and everybody come out to the festival.
Very well spoken.
Mr. Smith.
Uh, yes, this time of year, of course, thankfully, we've only got maybe one day, they're projecting hundred-degree temperatures. Of course, it's the day that we'll be out at the park, but, but one of the things we need to consider this time of year, actually on a year-round basis, is water conservation. We have, uh, this has been something that, that I brought up in the past, but I've had a number of calls already, and surprisingly enough, there were, there were complaints about, you know, roughly ten days ago, we had a pretty good rain, and you'd be surprised at the number of people that were offended driving through neighborhoods that saw sprinklers running while it was raining. Uh, that's not water conservation, folks. I got on the internet and did a little research, and I'm gonna get, read through just a couple briefly, a couple of ways that we can all save water. And if you think that there is no need for this, just look at some of the discussions we've had to have in the past and will have in the future regarding our water rates because of our limited water supply now and its worsening situation. So if you think this isn't important, you have another thought coming. Check your faucets and pipes for leaks. Uh, check your toilets for leaks. You know, you walk out of the bathroom, if your toilet's running, you got a problem there, folks. Use your water meter to check for hidden water leaks. That's something I don't know that many people are aware of, but you can do that. Install water shaving shower heads and low faucet aerators. A very inexpensive way to save money. Those are items that will pay for themselves. This one goes out to my daughter, take shorter showers. Turn off the water after you wet your toothbrush. Rinse your razor in the sink. Uh, use your dishwasher and clothes washer only for full loads. Who would, who would think of that naturally? If you have a compost pile in your yard, or if you're thinking of starting one, much of which you run down that garbage disposal, can go right out in your compost pile. Save that water. Put a layer of mulch around your trees and plants. That'll hold more water. Don't water the gutters, one of the points they said. What, what they meant is make sure that your sprinkler heads or your sprinklers are directed to hit grass as it operates, so you're not watering your driveway or sidewalk, or, or the water's going off where it shouldn't go. And water your lawn only when it needs it. I mean, even this time of year, it's ninety to a hundred degrees. You don't have to water your yard twice a day. You don't even have to water it every day, depending on the type of grass that you have. Deep soak your lawn. One of the ways that you can tell if you're watering your yard enough, for those of us that are not green thumbs, is you can put an empty tuna can in your yard, and when you're, when that tuna can is full, you've watered about the right amount in your yard. I didn't know that. Learn something new every day. Water during the early parts of the day and avoid watering when it's windy, because the wind will, will dry that water up that you're pumping out on the yard. Anyone that wants one is welcome to this list that I pulled up, but you can get, you can Google it, and you can get a list of a hundred ways that you can conserve water. But it's something that we all need to consider, and we all need to consider now, because I promise you, if we don't, we're gonna, we're gonna go broke paying for water. We'll pay more for water than we do gas. So that being said, I'm done, Mr. Albert.
Great points. Mr. McCarron?
Happy Fourth of July to everybody in Yukon.
Mr. Gerba?
Um, we just had our study session here tonight, and we were kind of talking about marketing Yukon, and basically bringing in more businesses and giving us an ident, kind of an identity as a, as a city that's recognizable. I just kind of tell all the citizens out there, if you want to get involved, get ahold of one of the councilmen, get ahold of somebody in the city government, and just basically give us your ideas. We want to, what we want to do is, is give Yukon an identity that's recognizable and, and valuable to people. And who knows Yukon better than the citizens? So I'm just saying, hey, if you want to get involved, hit us up, give us your ideas, and we'll see if we can throw all this stuff together and, and, you know, help bring in more businesses, more, you know, more neighbors, more things like that, and just kind of help Yukon prosper.
And Nick, did you want to share your tagline that you?
No, I don't, I'll say that for later, thanks.
I thought it was pretty good. That's the only reason I brought it up.
Oh, no, I'll probably get beat up after the meeting, right? Somebody's not from Yukon, but that's all right.
Anything else?
That's it, thanks.
I have just a couple. Again, you hear about my little boy, and, and we spend a lot of time at the parks. One thing, the gym has been redone at Jackie Cooper and looks great. Looks, the floor looks really nice, and if you get a chance to go down, they're just about finished painting the walls, or the walls are painted, they're just about to little, put the little strip around the bottom, so it looks really good. The floor seemed, seemed a little bit slick, but I get, is that gonna, will it get more sticky after a while?
Well, the nature is that if, if you don't have on the exact right shoe, number one, you're gonna slip and slide. It is by, it's, it does have a little grit. Arnold and I went out earlier today and looked at it. It does have a little bit of grit, but maybe not quite what that messed-up thing was that we were playing on, because you were probably running across rolled-up finish that was over the top of it, so it might not grip quite as good as that.
Uh, that other one was really slick. It was, it was worn out. And then a, a couple of things, we finished up our Little League baseball, and I just wanted to compliment. I know that the city leases that out, but the city's involved, and they do a great job with the, the umps and different things and, and helping the kids. And then to wind it up, we used the community center pool and had, had a, a party there and everything. And we got compliments on how, what, how great the lifeguards were, how they worked with the kids. We had two lifeguards, so if you rent the pool, you've got to have lifeguards. There were two of them that were there that night. One of, the, the big kid that's going to go play football, I don't, what's his name? Travis. Travis got down there in the deep end and helped those little kids come off the water slide and everything, and I mean, he's, and he's huge, you know, so you just grab him and throw him right out on the, on the side. I mean, but that's the kind of things that, that we do. And then David, the other one, he was in the shallow end, and he was playing with the kids and letting them use the big red, you know, lifeguard safety floaty deal. But I mean, those are the little things that, that we do, you know, when we talk about marketing the community, and, and those are just some of the things that I want to share with you from time to time. It's, it's just, it's wonderful, and thank you all, because you don't hear it enough. The light-the-mill thing, we're, we're working on that. The chamber, you all, thank you for working on, on that, and it was a good party, and, and we've got a ways to go. But again, be part of our history and future, and I think continue to, if you have a little extra money, or like Nick says, if you have some ideas, that's another opportunity to, to get involved. And also, I want to say thank you to the chamber for the great magazine that recently came out. Received some, some really good compliments of that. It really looks, it's well put together, and I think it's something, something great for our image.